You got rid of your horn cup or you still have?
I've never had one.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Row, here Nancy, here Eric.
Yes.
Jake.
Yes.
Okay, upcoming legislation, uh, we're gonna kinda go through these, uh, do they have any questions, comments regarding ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixteen? Okay, resolution thirty one twenty twenty four.
Um, yeah, my only concern is six businesses with those two exits. Is there anything that can be done to not have five exits all a hundred and forty-six feet apart? Right now, it may not be a problem. Five years from now, that could be a major catastrophe. Does anybody have any idea of how we could not have?
Well, first of all, I don't know. Do we know for sure? I mean, we know there's six spaces, but we don't know that there's six different businesses. There might be three businesses or two businesses.
Right.
So I think that's a concern that we need to address.
With them.
With them and and down the road when it happens.
Well, we can't do it. I mean, once the driveways are there, we can't do anything else. We we can't react to this one. We gotta either be proactive or we're screwed. Cause once the driveways are there, we can't take them away.
Well, I'm just thinking if there's a turn in, like all of the other places. Is that not enough for?
A turn in, I mean.
Like if, are you talking about like the turn into the businesses or what do you?
Well, we're gonna have, you're gonna come off, first of all, we got fifty-five, thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna come up, you're gonna have pettits, and then a hundred forty-six feet, you're gonna have one of its entrances and exits, a hundred forty-six feet, you're gonna have the next one. A hundred forty-six feet, you're gonna have Chestnut Estates, a hundred forty-six feet, or whatever, you're gonna have Chestnut Commons.
Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna have tons of lefts and tons of rights, and as traffic gets more and more busy up there, and if the other side of the road would ever go commercial as well.
Mm-hmm.
We got a mess with no way to fix it.
That's, I mean.
This is something that Susan has had concerns on. I mean, have you guys heard that from her in your meetings?
This is basically following the village code. The zoning code requires entrances a hundred and fifty feet apart. And this is following the code. This is why he did not do a PC via planned commercial district. Cause he didn't have to come in and ask for any variances. This does meet the village code as proposed. So if you have problems with the code. Kinda like that ship has sailed probably for this business.
Yeah.
But down the road, if you wanna change the village code somehow, but right now, he went general commercial. Because it does meet the qualifications of the code. I mean, the council sets the code, and a business comes in, if they follow the code, they don't have to come back to you and ask for variances or anything like that.
When he originally brought it in, it was, he had said three.
I don't think he ever said three.
In the meeting, he said what's gonna be the restaurant plus two other, uh, spots.
He's never showed us anything with three in- three entrances.
I think he said that when he came in, um, before they had any drawings. He was like, it might be two, it might be three. I think that was before. I remember him saying something about that, but I think that was before he ever presented any like actual drawings.
I don't think he can, he can't put three, cause it doesn't meet the code. They'd be too close.
So you're talking three businesses.
Three businesses.
Three, oh, three businesses, not three entrances.
Correct, no, 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 no.
Uh, the the businesses, um.
And I mean.
It's a, it's a certain sized building. We don't have anything in the code that says you can only have, a business has to be so big.
Right.
I mean, and it's, it's based on the square footage of the building. He had to go with a major site plan.
So if I'm thinking correctly, there are a few businesses over in Grove City that have just two entrances and just two, either an entrance or an exit, two of those, and I get in and out of those just fine. I don't see the problem with him having just two. My only question was gonna be, did he rotate it like we asked? I missed the last.
He did not. He he had said he was gonna rotate so that the patio was facing pettits. He ended up making it an L building instead, so the patio is still where it was in the original.
No, the patio in the original, the building was cocked at an angle, and the patio faced, what, northeast?
Yeah, northeast.
And he cocked the building back around, so the front of, instead of the major restaurant being cocked to the northeast, it now faces east. So the patio that was on the northeast side now faces the east.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And he, and he put a driveway, he took away any parking spots on the residential side and just made that a drive straight into the building.
Perfect.
All the parking is laid out on the other side of the building and in front of the building, a few handicapped on the front of.
And he made a covered area.
And he put a little covered area kinda like between the.
Walk space.
Yeah, walk space between the restaurant and the rest of.
Yeah, it's an L instead of, it was just a long straight thing.
Yeah.
Instead of like three, three doors, like there's five total in the L, like five spaces, but they might be combined, like we just don't know what's gonna go in there.
Well, I mean, if you even think about the shops over next to Al Canyon currently, or off six sixty-five, there's only one entrance, one ex- like there's two drives, one to, one, you know.
I know what you're talking about.
You know, two entrances to get in and out. There are two of those, and it's just fine for traffic. I don't usually encounter a ton of traffic over there that is prohibitive, so.
Well, but up there, you've got a much larger roadway, and some of, and there's a light at the one, you know, coming out there, so there's traffic control. My concern is in the future, you know, we've got a roadway that may or may not get extended. And if he doesn't have a turn lane, which I don't know if that is, if the traffic study said he has to put in a turn lane. That would help alleviate it if there was a turn lane for people that are gonna turn in to get out of the way, to allow people coming south to see if people are coming out.
Is that road right there, the seven sixty-two, that's an ODOT road, right?
It's Welch.
Or Welch.
Welch Road. Uh, half of it's in the village, the other half is a county, Pickaway County.
Which part is next? Oh, it's the split.
Yeah.
So northbound is.
Pickaway County.
County, so, okay, so if it's village, then yeah, I could see that.
Where, where all of this could really change a lot if and when we ever annex across the road, which is Mr. Taylor's property. If the village ever annexed that, and since that's all farmland now, if 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 and when that time comes, you wanted to widen Welch Road and put four lanes, five lanes, and a turn down the middle, or whatever you wanted to do. That's where you would take the frontage off all that property and make your divided highway and do whatever you needed to do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see too big of a problem. I mean, we're already at the third reading. Shouldn't this have been brought up if there was a concern?
It it has been brought up at every reading. I've brought it up every time.
So how come?
Well, I mean, not every, not everybody's concern is gonna be resolved.
Right.
You know, there's six, we have six people who are gonna be voting.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, the, I've, I've had things where I've been the only vote against something because of a concern I had, but others didn't see it that way. That's what, that's what council's about.
Do you have any concerns?
Yeah, I just bring it up for, you know, consideration for people to think about until the the vote. I mean, I'm not saying I'm gonna vote no if it is not there, it's just a concern that, you know, is it gonna be something we wish we did? I think a wise person once said, we only get one chance to get this right.
Anything else on that one? Okay, resolution twenty-nine twenty twenty-four.
That's just the temporary budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just necessary third reading for the budget.
This one's gonna be up for our first reading, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four seventeen. This is on the, uh, Harsh Alley.
And as a reminder to council, there will be a public hearing for the rezoning.
Yeah.
At six thirty prior to the next meeting. And we've, we're kinda looking for that rezoning, public hearing from six thirty to six forty-five. And at six forty-five, then there'll be a, uh, second public hearing, and that will be for the variance request. And we're hoping six forty-five to seven o'clock for that. And then seven o'clock, we'll start our normal council meeting.
Do you wanna discuss things now? Uh, I know the variance is down here for discussion. Do you wanna discuss it as a whole now, or do you wanna separate it?
And also, the rezoning requires legislation, which is why it's got an ordinance. The variance does not require legislation. It's done by motion only.
Yes.
So that's why there's no.
And they only need the variance if we don't let it go to what they submitted.
Right.
So if we let them go, it it's what what I just, I'm just.
Four.
Four point five six is what is allowed in a normal, uh, six per acre, they have point seven eight, comes out like four point five six. So if we don't let them go more than that, they need the variance, and if we don't, if we let them go more than they need it, so.
Right.
May not need the variance. I mean, I, personally, what they put in, I don't see a problem with. I mean, Grove City has almost the same size. They have seven hundred and fifteen to seven hundred and twenty-five square foot.
Google Park.
Yeah, there, yeah, where Beal Park is.
I like the idea of living, of having to live back there off of Harsh Alley. That's a lot of traffic. Well, that was, that brings up another thing too, is that, you know, I have no problem with, with this, uh, consideration for these two items. However, uh, I would do everything that I could to do, to widen First Street so that we have in and out there and don't end up with, number one, construction traffic and remodeling traffic, but also, uh, resident, uh, additional traffic having come down Harsh Alley.
Yeah, I just think that's too many units per, for what we're, we're trying to put that many units in less than a half, less than three quarters of an acre. That's a lot.
I like the idea of it being a senior, but even with the variance, we're not guaranteed that. We're not guaranteed he's not gonna have section eight. We already know he has section eight here now. So that's, um.
I think that.
A lot of people don't, don't want, that's what I'm hearing from the people that live back on Harsh. They don't want, you know, section eight and.
That was gonna be my question. Has anyone talked to the people who are gonna be the neighbors, like Mr. Hartley and Mr. Schoolly?
I talked to two.
Hill, Mrs. Welch, Mrs. Parment, or Mrs. Carter.
Yeah.
And me, I'm getting one of the letters too, and be quite honestly, as a citizen.
Sure.
I'm opposed, I agree with the rezoning. I think multifamily is great. I personally don't like the idea of possible section eight housing jammed back there. And I personally don't think, you know, even if you could guarantee it to be fifty-five and over, I get the idea you're shoving a bunch of older people into an old firehouse building. I mean, it just, I'm, I'm sorry, that's just what it looks like. I, I mean, I'm.
You don't like your future home?
No, no. You know, it's, 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 I don't, I think if we had a senior center someplace else, that's one thing, but it's like we're just cramming a bunch of people into, into a building. Hey, it's, I'm speaking as a resident, not the mayor.
Well, I think.
Well, sir, you need to sit along the wall.
I think, I think that he, you know, he's, he wants to help people who are on a fixed income. So even if it is section eight, I think, I mean, yeah, we don't know who will end up in there, but for people who are looking to stay on their own in the area on a fixed income, I think it's a really great, uh,
And that's why I like the senior part of it.
Yeah.
You know, um, and with the smaller ones, then you don't have, uh, you know, families.
That's right.
Not, not that I have anything against that, but I'm just like, it's such a, the traffic back there.
Yeah.
Is so bad. I mean, and there's kids riding dirt bikes on that road constantly, and four-wheelers that shouldn't even be doing it in the first place, but they don't pay any attention. Um.
Bill, what's the legality of putting a protective covenants? I mean, I know way back when they couldn't be upheld, but can we, is it some?
You can't spot zone, if that's what you're asking, to avoid something.
We can't.
Can, but it'll be overturned.
It, if it got challenged, it would absolutely be overturned.
I don't know that.
I do want everyone to recall, they came in and said, we also have commercial possibilities.
Yes.
Yes.
So if you're not down with seven hundred square foot apartments.
Yeah.
He was looking for direction, I think.
He was, and and he said he has no problem widening whatever, First Street, if it takes off of his other building. I mean, they, they, I talked to Mr. Hill afterwards, and, you know, he said, I, I'm a blank slate. I just don't wanna spend money without having you guys steer us in a direction of least resistance, for lack of a better term. Um, wonder if he would be, and I don't know that the facility will do it, but what if it was an assisted living kinda place?
Mr. Hill.
It's not making us, it's making us money.
Yeah.
He got a letter.
You don't think?
Yeah. It would be probably twenty units to make it work well.
Really? Yeah.
And if you do change the selling, someone was mentioning it. Notice this happened to all of you joining, so. So maybe. And I.
Well, we got the public hearing, so.
I must have said about commercials.
It was what, ninety of them or something like that?
How, how many went out?
Thirty, I wanna say thirty-one.
You know, and it's, with the section eight thing, I get what you're saying, Sarah, or to help people starters. Do you want section eight housing up against you? I mean, in all reality, do you want that up against your house?
I mean.
That seems to be the complaint that I've heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
And it's like, okay, so.
Yeah, and if that's a concern, then that's fine, and I get it, um, but I think it's a worse look for the village to like not give him an answer and have an empty building stuck in back there.
Oh, I, I think we need to give, we need to give him an answer.
For sure.
I don't, definitely. Commercial's gonna be dead. I think you're gonna, you're gonna get too much public against it.
Yeah.
And it's gonna come down to our code being so loose and lax and not having pinpoint areas, whether it be retail, it'll be neighborhood commercial, which is open to a lot of things, you know, and in the future, maybe we hone that down, but.
I don't, I don't think there was any problem with that being residential or multifamily. But I, now you're down to, how many units do you want back here? I think that is the whole crux.
And he did say that they could go with just four or five, but they're going to be.
Rent's gonna be a lot higher.
Yeah, they're gonna be, you know, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar a month apartments. And that's what he just wants to know.
Yeah.
Before he starts, which route he has to go. And if he does four, are we gonna expect him to still widen the road and do all of that? Is that gonna be either way? Ross, I mean, that's.
I mean, I mean, it, it's, it's a, it's a question on the thing. I'm just, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the increase in traffic that is actually going to the furthest place to the east and having to come in someplace and drive down narrow one-way alleys where.
Which is already tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's just, uh, we're adding additional traffic, uh, to that and, um.
Yeah, I think if you go four, then they're gonna be larger, which, you know, then, you know, we're gonna have families coming in who have two cars each and, you know, um, so there would be, I mean, and more increased traffic than if it were a senior.
Yeah, cause you'll probably be two bedroom at that point.
Yeah.
Cause if you just combine them and do away with this, that's twelve to fourteen hundred square feet. That'd be two bedrooms and family room. I mean.
Then we'd have to see how he would do his parking, cause as the state shows now, I mean, it, there's no room for parking.
Well, I mean, he could if he went alongside and came around the back and put a back entrance, I guess. I mean.
So that.
But that's an engineering thing, right? I mean, so is it sounding like everybody unofficially not making a vote? MFA is the direction we wanna steering? It's just a number? I mean, is that, is it?
I don't think anybody's steering anybody anywhere.
Well, no, that's what he's wanting though. He's wanting us to give him.
Yeah, no, you just, I'm just saying.
Oh.
That comes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Next meeting.
It sounds like MFA is what everybody's okay with, but.
So maybe, uh, you get Rakeem and kinda tell him, you know, what we were discussing here and.
I'm sure he's watching.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and, and kinda see what, what that looks like for him, like month, well, monthly rent wise, I guess I'm.
And, and they, they had originally told us in the meeting, when Keven was here, Keven and his, uh, Bruce was representing. And Bruce said, it's, the, the variance is not a deal breaker.
Right.
Right.
You know, it's, but he, they were looking for direction. You want multifamily or, you know, it makes no sense to have a single home there.
Oh, no.
That would just be ridiculous.
No, because the upgrades, I mean, it'd take six hundred fifty thousand plus.
So I guess that's where I would, I would wanna know, is like, what is his, um, dollar amount if we go to four, you know, is he gonna, is it gonna be like twenty-eight hundred dollars a month, like, you know, a lot of, like, you know, that's, you know, or is it gonna be like fourteen hundred is somewhat affordable?
Does any of that affect us?
No.
It should, I don't think that should affect us what his dollar amount is.
And, I mean, they probably got this number off of the property that's, uh, the old school building or whatever that's across from Boggs. The big tall building that now has like nine units or whatever. Yeah, front and what's that alley? Yeah, they, they probably got these numbers off of that, because it would probably coincide with that building, cause originally that was what?
That's, that's been that way for thirty years, old Matt's store.
Yeah, it used to be a store downstairs and apartments upstairs, right? Now it's all apartments. And I'm sure that's where they got the, you know, that in the Grove City, but.
I guess my, what might give us more closure is, you know, we have the public hearing, they're allowed to come and speak, we can hear what they want, what they don't want.
Hear what, yeah, hear what the neighbors want.
They are our constituents and we have to take.
Go from there.
Go from there. So I think that's where we leave with that.
And when's the public hearing again?
December second.
Before the meeting.
Prior to the next council meeting.
Six thirty, and then there's another one at six forty-five if, for the variance. Okay, um. The next one was resolution thirty-three twenty twenty-four. Derek, do you have?
Yeah, could you enlighten us on, is this just a matter of we have to? Cause we don't wanna do the state route.
Uh, no, this, ODOT's, this was nothing more than ODOT is cleaning up their records. They said in a letter they sent out that we received here at the village, their lawyer informed them that, you know, you're in here working on village streets throughout the state, and you don't have agreements with the village or anything else. This has been going on for years. Some of the villages hadn't made an agreement with ODOT for thirty or forty years. And they would like their, upon the recommendation of their lawyer, they basically sent all the wording and everything, and it's just like, we would like to go ahead and just make it official.
Do what we've always done.
Yeah, just put it in right.
Yeah, they, they don't have, they don't have permission to come in and put salt on our streets, and this would give them permission to do it. And to plow and that kinda stuff.
And that's the, our streets that they control, the state routes, right?
State routes, seven sixty-two.
So they're our streets until we wanna change a speed limit sign or something, and then it's there.
Well, no, we, we're not permitted, we're not permitted to put up guardrail. I mean, there are certain things that we can't.
We can, we can discuss that a little later.
Yes, that's gonna come up.
There's an email that came in today.
We've always had to go and get their permission.
Yes.
To do something, and most of the time, they're the ones who actually end up during, during the work, they, they have the.
Equipment.
Equipment, the material, they hear everything, but, but it's, it's a thing that we start the discussion, at least it always was. And, and, and hopefully it works to get something practical done by having them exercise it.
Is the timeline important on this?
Um.
Should we waive it, or should we let it?
It'd be nice to go ahead and get it through, just because, I mean, it's.
It's what we've always done, it's just the onward.
We're gonna do it, so that.
It's, it's just, no, it's, it's just paperwork, that's all it is. I mean, it's.
Okay, the next one is resolution thirty-four twenty twenty-four. Do we need a updated contract? Is that what we?
And you'll notice I left that one kinda in red on there on what I sent out to everybody. That is, that is, um, we don't, when we entered in, when we started doing the police GPS thing, we didn't sign a contract with them, cause everything was free for the first three years. We had to, what, pay for the equipment and get it all installed in the cars and all that stuff. But the actual service where we can go on, it's the, the app, basically. There, that was all free, and it was free for three years. That is up at the end of this year. And so we talked with them, and the cost on that was at thirty dollars, thirty dollars a cruiser a month is what, what they charge. Um, but they didn't know, do you want a one year, two year, three, four, or up to five years? No, there's no price break, but the thing is, if you lock in like five cruisers at thirty bucks, it'll stay there for any, during any price increases. If we would add a cruiser, we have to pay whatever the price is in effect at that time.
Yeah.
Not replace, just add.
To add. Except if we replace a cruiser, it can be transferred.
It would, y- you would still just do the thirty dollars, cause you tell them how many, at the beginning of the contract, you would tell them how many cruisers you have and for how long you want the contract. Now, the contract, you can pay five years at one time, you can pay it on a yearly basis. So I asked them to prepare us a contract based on five cruisers for five years. And we'll figure out how we wanna pay for it.
Just say not wanna go pay for annually?
Yeah.
Like eighteen hundred annually?
Yeah, and do, do an annual payment.
Oh, so we don't have to pay in lump sum?
No, it's still annually. So.
Okay.
That's kinda what we were setting up, but I, if that comes, we kinda need to get that in place right away, or we're gonna lose our GPS between us and the cruisers until it's passed and the contract signed. But the, uh, also, I haven't received the contract back, so if I don't get the contract, you're not gonna see, that won't be on your agenda.
When's our thing up?
December, end of this year, end of this year.
Yeah.
I'm just messing with you.
Yeah, no.
Okay, um, I'm gonna bring the chief in here, since he sent me an email. He did meet with Andrea regarding the Chestnut Commons. Um, great, so I'll just have him come in and. Ready to? Yes, we're getting ready to discuss the, um, Chestnut Commons special event road closure, and I thought.
Yeah, so, um, Thursday, I met with Andrea, is that right? Um, so I met with her Thursday, discussed, um, what they were looking at wanting to do, and also whatever concerns that we have. Um, first thing for the lineup, uh, that's where they were planning on doing the lineup. They said last year they did on Pettit's lot. I told them that I would absolutely be opposed to doing a lineup on Pettit's lot, cause that means either A, we're gonna be going out on Welch Road, or B, we're gonna be going out on State Route seven sixty-two, and both of those roads have sections that are, uh, fifty mile per hour plus.
Yeah.
So she said that, yeah, she got it that they intended to do lineup on Chestnut Commons Drive. Um, the number of vehicles, they were looking at three to four, uh, vehicles, uh, plus the fire department, if they were gonna have, uh, I think last year they had a fire engine there, and then whatever cars that we would have, have in it. Uh, she did not indicate of any, like, different vehicles, like golf carts or anything like that being brought out. Um, I think last year Santa, I didn't see it, had officers that were there. Santa was in the back of one of the pickup trucks, and somebody drove through, and there was a couple other cars where they waved and carried on whatever they did. Um, the route would start at Chestnut, um, Chestnut Commons Drive, but make a right, go back into the loop on the back part of Chestnut Commons, come back out on the Chestnut Commons Drive, they'd go right, then they'd go left to Red Oaks to go over to Chestnut Estates section, and they basically loop back through the roads there, ultimately coming to the end, um, after they were on Cherry Tree, out near the entrance of Chestnut Estates. Um, I did indicate to her that it would require use of volunteers, that we were not gonna bring in a bunch of officers to assist with traffic. I said, we can definitely get some closure signs. The intersections that definitely need to be shut down would have to be Chestnut Estates Drive, Chestnut Commons Drive, and Cottonwood at seven sixty-two. That prevent any outside vehicles from coming into that. With how they're gonna move, with the size of it, um, and there's really not a whole lot of roadways, cause they're gonna be making use of all the roadways. Um, there would be basically the parade moving through that whole area, but it would require shutting down that whole subdivision of Chestnut in general. Uh, but that's, that's what we discussed. I told her that, um, basically our meeting, I was the fact finder. That's all I was to do, was to just discuss, you know, what the details of it was, and come back and give you all the information that, um, like what, uh, the mayor said in the last meeting, I am not gonna shut a roadway down for a parade no more. It's gonna be up to the council to make that decision.
Time was her parade again. I think it was in the evening.
It is in the evening. I know it's on the fourteenth. I'm thinking about four to five o'clock, is what she indicated. I don't have my notes in front of me.
It's a dark, one dark parade.
December seventh, at four o'clock.
Maybe it was a little later then, cause if yours was at four, hers was definitely later than the village's, not yours, but the village's Christmas.
Do they have liability insurance?
I'm not aware they would have.
They're the vehicles.
Individuals.
I mean, if somebody falls out of the vehicle, who's responsible?
The vehicle operator.
Well, we sanction it, but we'd be responsible.
We're not sanctioning anything.
If we authorize, we give the police, that would be.
But the police aren't, are only volunteering. They're not.
No, they'd be.
They'd be paid.
Oh.
Cause they'd be on duty.
Oh, okay, makes sense.
We can't really have our officers volunteer for their employees.
What happens if, you know, we get a call that takes both units out, and we're all afraid? I mean, we just abandon it and tell them it's not closing?
We're, we're gonna tell them that we can't be there for the parade. I'm, I'm not gonna ask for a parade if I got somebody getting hurt.
I just, I just think that a fifth of your parade personally, and two twenty of your parade.
Well, that's what I was thinking, like, why are we having two of them, two weekends back to back, when everybody could just be part of it? My biggest concern is if we're gonna shut down a whole subdivision, or at least even just a major part of it, people who aren't participating are gonna be kinda ticked off, that they can't get in, they can't move. And, I mean, I'm not saying they're grudges by any stretch, I'm just saying, they might not appreciate a parade. Not everybody does. And it being on a Saturday, I mean. And it being on a Saturday, I mean, people, that's evening, if some people work, that's when they're coming in, that's when people. I personally, I think it should just be a no for a subdivision. And if anybody wants to be in a parade, come talk to the council, Parks and Rec Department, and we can get it all together. That's just me.
Yeah, and you bring up a good point about like if we if we were to pass this and be liable for something.
And because I know with just the food trucks and the mince cups, get their insurance.
Yeah.
And do we really want to be liable for something else?
I made how I felt during the meeting, so I'm good.
Yeah, that that would be the thing, I've, I'm not gonna bring overtime cops in for for an event like that. We would normally have two officers working on that shift. And if they're there, again, I'm not gonna tell police officers if we have a call of, yeah, if it's a general report, yes, that's not a life or death situation. But if we would have an active domestic, we would be derelict to not respond to it, so.
I think we need to say it's a community.
Well, thanks, Adam, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Employee wages discussion. Message, you know, I'd ask. For the department heads to send something, I assumed they'd send them to the mayor first, like they don't really do. I messaged the mayor for that information, I never got a return email. So this is. This is something he did, this isn't what the department head said. So, you know, council, I think we just need to get together as a whole and kind of discuss what, what we want to do, since we don't have any wishes from the department heads.
And that is, that is pretty much it, I told the department heads this, that what was coming up. And I basically told them, we had a discussion about what it was, what everyone's making and wages and so on and so forth. So I took it upon myself to put this together. I've also done done some homework and I'll pass these out, I've pulled these offline. But everyone's welcome to a copy. Pass them down, I think there's plenty for everybody.
I gave them all my way.
You might want to get it back.
That's okay.
Here, here.
It's just the percentages.
Here, we can share.
Got it. Still got one.
Anybody want, the council want to start?
I mean, my personal, my personal opinion is I, I'm confused as to why we give blanket raises when. Everybody that's not maxed out have built-in raises, they have step raises. The only people that don't get anything are the people that are maxed out, which are the people that have been with us for the longest time. Personally, I would rather give a percentage raise to those people and incentivize people to stay with us to then reach that. If we give a blanket raise, then why do we set up a pay scale with step raises if we're just gonna give them a raise anyways? I I mean, I don't.
There's no, is this just, and we don't do this as performance, we do this as, hey, you're here, every six months you're gonna get a raise whether you.
Yeah, it's in the employee handbook, it's after so long.
It is, it is based what we have in employee handbook, there's a chart. It gives everyone and their step raises for a duration, I believe, of three years.
Yes.
At three years, their top pay. What we have done in the past is if you do a percentage raise, so you just want to give everyone a percentage. If you look at this, and here we have sixteen employees, and there's what each employee makes, all sixteen of them.
Right.
Employee number one, at a two and a half percent raise gets a buck eleven.
Yeah.
Employee number sixteen gets a fifty-eight cent raise.
But employee number sixteen is gonna get another fifty cents on a step.
Not not if they're top pay.
But they they would be top pay at that amount.
If if they have been here for three years, they are at top pay.
But we wouldn't have anybody at twenty-three dollars at top pay.
Yes, we do.
The water department's high?
I didn't say what, this is every employee.
I'm asking because.
It doesn't matter who they are, I'm taking individual names out of it, it's numbers. Employee number sixteen is at top pay.
I thought all of our people topped out higher than twenty-three dollars.
No.
I thought this was what they currently made.
This is what they currently made, if you look in the employee guidelines.
Yeah.
You will see the steps and what top pay is for each employee.
Okay.
That is the top pay for that person.
After their max out offset.
That is their top pay, if they've been here three years, that is what they make.
Okay.
If they're given a two and a half percent raise, that is what they will get.
So twelve hundred dollars a year.
And if if that person is at top pay, which they're not, but if they were.
Yeah.
There's what they would get.
That's twenty-two hundred dollars.
So what you have by doing percentage raises, the biggest raises go to the person making the most money and your chart just keeps going like this. You're separating.
Why does everybody have to have the same percentage raise? Like if, like my question is, is the person at the top is making the most, but we still want to give them a raise? Everybody's getting two percent raise. I'm just using a example, why can't we choose to give that person, you know, a one percent raise? Or choose to give this person based on their performance and their longevity and their.
What what we wound up doing was, if you'll notice on here, we took everyone's wage, added it up. Four hundred and eighty-nine dollars an hour is what the village pays out in wages, every hour, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That's the medium wage, or that's the actual cost of what every employee is making right now, added up. We took this average wage per hour, we took everybody, divided them by sixteen, so the average village wage is thirty dollars and sixty cents. We took a two and a half, I did it two and a half because that's what social security was, that's what they said that raise is gonna be in the cost of living. That comes out based on the median wage, that comes out to seventy-seven cents an hour. If you give, if you come up here then to over here in the chart, if you gave everyone an eighty cent an hour raise across the board. You will see that the top person is only getting one and one point eight percent raise, and the lowest person's getting a three point four eight percent raise. So the small, the the person, the person at the bottom's getting the largest percentage of raise. Which, does that answer what you were saying? So that's by giving everyone, last year, I believe council gave everyone a dollar, a dollar an hour. The guy at the top of the pay scale did not get a cost, didn't it, it didn't equate, the percentage didn't equate to a cost of living. And the person at the bottom of the scale got like twice the cost of living. And you'll see the same thing plays out here at the seventy-seven cents, you've got, or at the eighty cents. The one person's getting one point eight percent raise, the other person's getting a three point four eight percent raise.
I think there is, in addition, separate from this, there is, there are things that we need to do for our employees that have been here, you know? So I know that this has been kicked around a couple times, but I I thought of longevity pay. If you're here five years in the year, get a five hundred dollar bonus. Then every year you're here, you get another hundred and you're capped out at like a thousand. I think things like that, a lot of people get longevity pay, I think something like that is an incentive to to be a loyal employee. I think other things could be, you know. I know the firm I worked at years ago, we always got our birthday off, we had like a month to use it. You know, I think that we need to start doing things like that in order to to make.
Yeah, or I've worked at firms from May to September, you got to take one Friday a month to like take off.
Yeah.
For free.
I mean, to me, we can give, you can give perks or you can give cash.
Right.
Well, longevity pay is cash.
Well, the longevity, but to me.
Perks would be better.
To me, it's it's like, which way do you want to give the?
Why can't we do both, why can't we give the cost of living and longevity pay?
I just, I, you know, years ago, it's four years ago, I think it was, now. We we finally took, we we, the village, finally took the the big step and corrected a lot of the pay inequities. When we had that fifteen percent.
Yeah, that was two years ago.
And we we corrected a lot of things, and now I I think we're in a place where where we need to maintain. And of course, in this system, there's no, there's nothing built in for performance, there's there's nothing here that is, you show up, you got a pulse.
That's what I'm saying, whether you work or don't, you get a raise.
But the same thing would be of longevity, oh, you have to live long enough and you get.
But you're here.
You're here, you live long enough.
I think that.
Why don't, why don't we look at performance?
I don't know why that changed.
The perform, it it says in the employee guidelines that upon a negative review, your your step raise may not happen. So performance is looked at.
So the previous council, not administration, previous council decided to adopt that the mayor gets an automatic five percent every year. So that's if we, if that's worth five percent, are the rest of the employees not?
Right.
I mean, I personally, I don't know that the mayor's position should ever get a raise, it's a public service spot for four years. Now, if somebody runs a multiple terms and you want to say their second consecutive terms is an increase? But I wasn't here for that vote, and so I.
So you think the mayor should be a free position?
No, it should be, it should, right now it's twenty-five thousand, it should be twenty-five thousand for all four years. It's not a full-time job.
Well, it is.
Well, if it if it's full-time, then we need to pay it full-time. I mean, I I know that our current mayor puts in full-time hours.
But you can't get a raise at this point in time, right? You couldn't get a raise.
No, he, it's in there, he's getting five percent this year, five percent next year.
What they did, which I'd never seen done before, in twenty-twenty-two, we had a member on council who said, who said, I think we need to up the mayor's raise and he needs to get five percent a year.
Yep.
And healthcare, I think we get healthcare.
Yeah, they, he threw that in there and I, anyway. But that's that's what they did, typically in the past, council would set, council would set the wage, and that's what it was for your whole term.
Right.
And at the end of your term, if council before they, in fact, it has to be done prior to the election.
Yeah, so if we make a change now, it doesn't affect him, it would affect whoever is next.
But what the council voted on then was to raise the wage and do a five percent per year. I had no say in it or anything.
I think that's silly, quite honest with you, I mean, to say that the mayor's worth five percent a year and that nobody else in the village is.
This is the the inequity in in the system that's set up like this on a table, is that it it really doesn't, it really doesn't take into effect. The what the value of what each person does.
Absolutely.
I mean, I mean, and.
Got it.
I mean, this is the situation where, this is a situation where, you know, Alan is, he's a one-man show. I mean, he just, he makes the decisions, he stays on top of the finances, he stays on top of personnel, he does everything. He doesn't count on somebody else to be a part of that, he leans on Wendy for all kinds of answers and help and stuff. But when it comes to decision-making, you know, and 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 when I was involved in the past. The village administrator was a very important part of the administration because there were things that we did, you know, that were done as a as a team and as a group. And there were group consenses and decisions made. At that time, other people had higher value, other positions had higher value. But the the way it is now. Alan's where, Alan's where it's happening, and that's what the coordinator, who are say, you're running the thing the way, the way that it that it allows you to. You you rely or on as much or as little as you want to for the the other people that are out there, as long as things are going okay. And it is, the bottom line is, the village looks good, it sounds good, things are going well. But I just, I hate these discussions where we're trying to talk about how to compensate people whom we don't even know what they're doing. That's just tough, that's just very difficult.
I I think something, and I like I said, I passed this sheet I just passed out, I pulled all this, I don't know if anyone else has done a homework in preparation for this discussion.
Not this year, last year I did.
I know we got another cow meeting before any decisions has to be made. But if you go there and pull out this, you can see, okay, and these were right, right in Google, you can go pull them up.
Yep.
And there's state of Ohio averages, so it's an average pay, which means you got half the states making more than that and half below that.
But it also includes ODOT. And street and these figures. The ones I did last year.
Okay, okay, and so you you start down the list and you can see a state average village administrator, sixty thousand.
But that's probably full-time.
That is a full-time position.
That really.
Yeah.
And so you're, that's where you're not comparing apples.
Right.
To apples, and I I get that.
And I think eventually we will need full-time.
But you're looking, I mean, and utilities superintendent, obviously, we're paying a little bit more. Fiscal officer, we're paying a little more.
But we've got one that's been here for.
Yeah.
Well, not only, not only that, you you look at competency.
Right.
I mean, and that position, that's where, I mean.
A scale doesn't take into it, into effect.
Yeah, this is just strictly, strictly numbers, yeah. You look, and they had it divided up, small towns, police chief and full-time typical police chief.
Yeah.
In the small town, you can see that we're behind on that, road supervisor, we're ahead on that. Administrative assistant, they had that divided up into administrative assistant and administrative assistant most experienced. The most experienced, you can see we're a little ahead on that at this time. The one that really surprised me out of this was police officer. The police officer was twenty-eight dollars an hour, and that is exactly what our top pay is, I mean, we hit it on the button. The problem is with all this here.
Yeah.
I think when we look through this, we are close with the state average, we're equal or better on everything on the state average. Where we're not equal or better is if you look at South Bloomfield and Asheville. Because on the state average, you're taking in, like I said, you're taking in the whole state and we're still keeping up everyone. But I think something we need to be looking at is what do these people make at South Bloomfield and Asheville? Because these are actually more logical steps for us.
Yeah.
My problem I've ran into, the biggest discrepancy I've got is the police officers.
Yeah, they both just did big raises.
Our police, trying to get their people caught up. We're paying our top pay for a police officer that's been here for three years is twenty-eight dollars. South Bloomfield, their top pay is thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Is that the new one?
That that was twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah, they just did a mercy raise, so.
I believe what they did, they used to pay, I was told they used to pay the the fourteen percent or whatever.
Right.
And they quit paying that because they couldn't get anyone to come and even fill out an application. Because they'd look at the starting pay and it was so low.
Right.
Even though they had this great benefit that nobody else did.
That's what I say, which way, you know, which way do you?
So what they found out, they couldn't get anyone, so they quit the benefit, they dropped the benefit, raised the wage. And now, like I said, they're they're paying thirty-one seventy-seven an hour for their top pay. Asheville is paying thirty-one fifty an hour for their top pay. Commercial points paying twenty-eight dollars for our top pay. Columbus, we can't compare ourselves to Columbus, but their top pay, I actually pulled it out just for giggles. I wanted to see exactly where Columbus was on this thing, and they, city of Columbus, you start out at thirty-three ninety-nine an hour. So they're starting out at thirty-four dollars an hour. So they're getting six dollars an hour more than our top paid officers, and that's their starting. They get raises for every year for four years, and they top out at fifty-two dollars and six cents an hour, which puts them a hundred and eight thousand dollars an hour.
And that's with no shift difference or anything, most of them are at fifty-nine ninety-six.
I think some of these are very hard to, like, police officers, they have a strict job duties of what they do. Road supervisor, the same, I think when you look at administration, there's several different jobs within that position. And honestly, I think that there needs to be someone maybe to look at all of these positions to see what they really should be making. Well, there's people, you know, that, this is what they do job-wise. They they look at what the job duties are, not just, because a fiscal officer, Wendy's more than a fiscal officer. Okay, she does zoning, she does, you know, I mean, she, she is the go-to here. I mean, if you have a question, she can help you, and that's.
Well, and I think that admin, administrative assistant salary is really low, because I've worked as an admin for a long time, definitely, for any position.
Well, like I said, that's, that's, those are the state averages. If it, I would encourage you to do homework and come up with some ideas.
Right.
But like I said, my biggest problem that I'm seeing is the police officer deal. I mean, we should at least, I mean, Asheville and South Bloomfield are within twenty-five cents of each other, we're four dollars down an hour.
Well, that's just because they they did raises, but.
Well.
You know, my issue is that, you know.
Asheville, Asheville's was last year, they didn't just do a raise, that's their typical scale.
And there are some. And there are some officers that are never on there, never. So there's some, like, the new guys are, you know, they're doing great, but, a- and then, you know, when I meet with the chief and he says, well. This certain person just doesn't like writing tickets. I mean, that's what I was told. And then they're like, well, he does better evidence and reports, you know, eventually I want to do like a part-time position for that. So basically you're waiting to create a position and I thought we were done with part-time positions for this person.
I don't know who said anything about where, there is no discussion, no, he has not said part, well, he hasn't said part-time to me.
I, I think he means on the road.
On the road, part-time and then in the office.
He means full-time officer, but a split position.
But, I mean, we have to have, you know, and, and how many, you know, I, I know, I tell them to, to send in here. Cars being parked on the wrong side of the road, the, the burnouts all over town. How many complaints have we had? More than I have fingers and toes.
And how many complaints have we received in the office? You can count them on one hand.
I, yeah, I knew, I, I knew.
You know, you know that.
I, I send, I send them in here. I don't take them and, I'm like, send them. And you know, some have emailed you and if.
And every, everyone that's emailed, we've talked back to and answered or set up a meeting with the chief.
But I, I think that, um.
I said, this, this stuff here takes emotion out of it.
Yeah, it does.
It takes everything out, you're looking across the board. And across the board, our police officers at top pay are four dollars an hour. Underneath Asheville and Bloomfield.
But we're not, but this discussion isn't about that, correct?
No, this, this, no, this, well, that is.
Is this one we discuss?
This is.
Change here for next year?
Yes.
This is kind of where, so we can.
This is where, I thought we were just discussing raises right now. I didn't know we were discussing.
Well, that would be.
Four, four dollars, four dollars an hour increase is a raise.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not, and I'm not saying you throw everyone four dollars an hour, but I think you need to possibly on.
I would like to do.
Since we are, since we are so underpaid at top pay, our officers compared to our local neighborhoods. Who's basically, they're patrolling the same thing and doing the same thing that our officers are doing. Maybe our top pay should be comparable to them and then step it down the step and wherever they happen to be on the stair step, that's where they're at.
Well, if we did something like that, would we want to do something like what South Bloomfield did and take away, like instead of, and make the pay higher, but take away the.
South Bloom, we, we don't do that anyway.
Oh, we don't.
Well, but one of the reasons their pay went up though is because they did the fourteen percent.
Right.
So what was it, what is it with that fourteen, you know what I mean? So their pay went up because they added the fourteen percent that they pay. Before that, we were about the same.
Yeah.
Because we actually had an officer not want to go there because it was a pay cut.
Yep.
Of like three dollars an hour, two dollars an hour, something like that.
So now, well, I don't know what they're.
That's a good point. They got the raise because they quit paying and so.
And how much more they got over and above that or less, I don't know. But I know Bloomfield done away with that one major benefit.
Yeah.
But the only thing, it, the only thing I'm saying at the end of the day, I can't compete with Columbus. If an officer wants to go there and make.
You can't.
Start out six dollars an hour higher rate. And where, where we're at is our officers are twenty-eight. Bloomfield and Asheville are right at thirty-two or close to thirty-two dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Pickway County Sheriff's at thirty-four dollars an hour, and that's for twenty-twenty-five for them, is thirty-four dollars an hour. And the city of Circleville's at thirty-six dollars an hour. Those are the facts of where we are.
Yeah.
Are we trying to bring more officers in?
Well, we've got.
Are we just worried about losing officers?
Losing officers is where we're at now. Bloomfield and Asheville's are hiring right now.
And the sheriff's office just got another raise.
The sheriffs, I think that they're not hiring right at the moment. I think they finally filled up, but I'm not positive. I think they've, they're full. But you have Bloomfield Nashville are hiring. And if you're working here for, well, our guys aren't even up to the twenty-eight dollars an hour yet. But I'm just saying, once you get the top pay, I've, I personally feel that we should be comparable to what's being paid at Asheville and Bloomfield. And we are in every other job title except police officers. And we are above state average in every other job title. Except police officers. I, the deficiency I see, and we, once it been, it was three years ago, like Ross said. Our police department was way down and we said, why don't we do a fifteen percent raise for the police officers is where the conversation started. And doing that would have put us right in line with Asheville and Bloomfield. Well, the conversation, well, we're giving them fifteen, we gotta give everyone fifteen.
Well, I mean, it would have been, I mean, and I told Jason, I said, I'll take that deal for my guy.
Yeah, you know, and that's, and no, but that's, that's where the conversation went.
Yeah.
So the whole village got a fifteen percent raise that year.
And it really put them.
It put everyone.
It made them right.
It made them right. The problem we're into now is we're still right with the utility guys. We're still, you know, we're still right with a lot of them.
Right.
But we're not right with the police department because.
Fifty-eight, two forty, fifty-eight, two forty.
That's the state average.
That's what you said though, you said we're low.
I'm saying we're low compared to Asheville and South.
Okay, so now we're just talking local, cause you had said state, so I was.
No.
Yeah, you said state for all these other, but police.
Well, yeah, well, and, well, no, the, we're.
The police chief were low.
My, my problem is we can't compete with Columbus.
Well, and we don't, we don't want to.
We don't want to.
We can't, we can't, anybody in Franklin County.
Somebody goes to Columbus to go to work for the first fourteen years, you got Tuesday and Wednesday off, you're working third trick and you're working every hot. I mean, there are some other things that go along with that, that big thing. You're at the bottom of the pole.
It must not be great. We just got one from there. Well, he was there and came here.
But we're also getting ready to lose one from here to there.
There are other reasons that people.
Yeah. Shoes. And, and yeah, you, but at, at the end of the day, I think we need, we, there's no reason. Why we're not close to Asheville and Bloomfield in all of our wages, not just police chief or police chief, not just police officers. I think everyone should be comparable to Asheville and Bloomfield. If we're not comparable to them. I mean, I, we can't be comparable to Columbus, I get that.
Right.
But there's, but we've got it, all of our wages should be comparable to Asheville and South Bloomfield.
So can that be brought then for the next council, since we have time? Can someone bring that?
Well, I think that would be a good job for the, for the council to go ahead and do the homework and put, do your homework.
It's, now, I will say that they are all police officers. But to say that the police officer is doing the same here that they are in Asheville, having worked there, is not a true statement.
When did you work there?
Uh, up till oh-two, three.
So you're talking twenty-two, twenty years ago?
Right. And it, we were a lot busier back then and they're even busier now. I mean, I'm friends with a lot of those people. So yes, we are a little bit lower. But our officers aren't going from call to 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 call constantly in court and all that. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't be up there, but to say that we're way low, I, I don't believe so. Now. And well, not even twenty-three, they're still busier, but I do agree we need to come up. But I don't think that we can say that they, yes, they are all police officers. They can do the same thing. But ours aren't getting beat up, you know, like they are all.
Well, I'm not saying anyone at the village is being overworked.
Right, right, no, I, but I mean, that's why I, I, I am, I do agree that we should be competitive, but to match, I don't know.
I don't know, I find, like I said, it's, I was just surprised to see that Asheville and South Bloomfield was within a quarter of each other.
Yeah.
And we're four dollars off.
To be close to them, I think that's the only way you're gonna be competitive, is to be close to them.
One, you gotta think too, like, like Eric said, South Bloomfield got that huge raise because fourteen percent, they were paying into retirement where they are not now. So.
And honest, so honestly, it wasn't even a raise.
Right.
It saved the village money.
Money around.
You know, it's just, they get it on their paycheck.
They shifted money.
Yeah, that's all they did.
That's all they did.
They shifted money, it's obvious.
But still more money than.
But even after their shift, it's a lot more than what we were making. So they were actually getting more than us, although they was getting part of theirs in better benefits.
Yes. So for somebody that was looking before their shift, on paper, it looked like it was two dollars and. I think the officer told me two dollars and ninety-some cents less on the paycheck. So what he was getting, working.
Three dollars an hour less.
Yeah, so he was making three dollars an hour more here on his paycheck than he would have if he went to Bloomfield. But now that they've changed, he'll get more on his paycheck.
So they've obviously added some cash on top of that too.
Yeah, they have to because it just.
But he has to now pay his own.
Right, right. With, so the.
Which is what our guys do, which kind of levels out the field when you're comparing the wages, if the benefits are, I mean, and they all get. Or what Asheville does, all their employees get, uh, what, free health insurance?
Yeah, the singles, singles.
For single.
So do we.
And so do ours. And that's what I'm saying. So I think the benefits are probably.
And we pay fifty percent of, of family and we moved in the, the, the Aflac, we brought that in for short-term disability.
And their, and their employees get some of that stuff too.
Forty dollars a month to spend on whatever they wanted, um.
So it's kind of like, I think benefit-wise, we're all pretty, we're all, and I'm talking Asheville and Bloomfield, we're close. I think wage-wise, we're probably ahead on everything except the police department.
Yeah, we, we've got a little work to do.
So I, I think if council go get, do the homework and put it together and figure out where you want to go with this. Like I said, this is what we, this sheet here and what we've done in the past, is we figured this out. Here's a medium. If, and as you can see, if you want to give a dollar an hour raise to every employee, we've added that dollar to every position on the chart. And just kind of like elevated the chart a little bit.
Then that means like the people that are not at the top and still have raises, they're still gonna get a just.
They still get their raises.
So they're getting.
But they're, but they're, yes, over a period of time, they're gonna get their steps, but the person at the top's already up there. This person here is still working his way to get to the top.
Those.
We want our employees that have been here.
Directly impacted by economic changes too.
Who, Ross, I'm sorry, who?
The, the person who's at the bottom of the scale is more directly impacted by economic.
Yeah.
Changes. So that, that dollar means more.
Well, it's, the, the dollar percentage, this person is getting a four-point-three, five percent raise. And this person's getting cost of living.
Exactly. That, the, exactly.
So this person's almost getting not quite double, cost of living.
Right.
We'll put this on again for next month, but I do want people to, to really think about the longevity pay. I think that it's, it's something. It's an incentive.
Does that, does that become, and I don't care, that's fine, I, I think it's a good idea. But does that become something that when you're trying to get an applicant, don't show up? That's.
What do you mean?
When you're trying to fill a position, such as Bloomfield tried to fill a position, hey, we'll pay all of your OPNF. It didn't show up and when someone's looking to come in to work for you, it doesn't mean anything to them.
But it's an incentive. Oh, you know, I'm.
It's not an incentive to bring someone in.
No, but it's an incentive to our.
To try and keep someone.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, we, we have good employees, we want to keep them, we want to treat them right.
Do that by this.
And.
Yeah, that, I, I think he.
I'm in.
So Ross, you think. So you think increasing stuff all across the board is how to keep people? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, no.
No, I, I didn't understand what you're asking.
You keep, you keep people by, by treating them correctly with, with the salary, I think. Uh, you know, I mean, this, you're insane for coming to work, this, you've got, you're driving new vehicles or you're able to do the things that you want to do. You know, that, that pays for your habits and your hobbies. I mean, that's the reason that, you know, you come to work. It's, um, on a short term, you know, somebody's worked really tough. The month of December, you had to work all this mandatory overtime and stuff like that. How are you gonna fund this for doing that? That's, that's directly attributed to that behavior. And it's like, okay, you get this because of what you did here. But over a long period of time, I've always looked at the fact that I continue to be employed, I got raises, my benefits are got. I looked at all those things as, as my continued benefit and my reward for staying at work. I, I don't know, it's, everybody's got a different feel on it, I just.
All right, let's save this for next month, I think we'll talk it together.
Yep. Good.
Okay, um, next is Addison Farms, TIF and NCA discussion. Um, I thought they were gonna be here at our meeting last month.
I thought we might have, get any information from anybody?
Bill will speak to this.
Oh, okay.
I have nothing to say on it.
I've got to hand out development agreement that came in, um, late today. When I say late.
Four fifty-four, four fifteen.
From three to five and I think I forwarded it down at five.
That's why you came in late.
I haven't seen it.
So I haven't seen it, but this is what is going to be up for discussion at the next meeting. The next meeting, they're willing to come and answer any questions that we may have.
So you have not gone over this? Is that what you?
I have not even read it. Correct. I, I was literally on a Zoom call from three to five, it came in. And it came in with a cover email, be happy to come down to the next regularly scheduled council meeting and answer any questions. This is our draft development agreement, which has the TIF and the NCA that they want. Prior to the last meeting at three fourteen in the afternoon, I got an email from their council. Um, that I was able to discuss with the mayor, uh, you know, five minutes before our last meeting, which basically said. Um, we addressed Ross's concerns, we've taken out the townhomes, we've limited the number of homes there. And because of the economic impact, this is what we'd like to do. We'd like to create a TIF. We'd like to use the public improvement TIF funds for off-site water sewer extensions. We'd like to be able to use the TIF funds to pledge any developer bonds that have to be issued for the. NCA, the new community authority district. And after the TIF bonds are retired. The funds would be controlled by the village commercial point. They'd like to have the. Prior plans, which were submitted in August of twenty-twenty-four, that was after the changes were made.
Right.
Um, approved by us, but they don't want to approve them without getting the TIF and the NCA in place. The NCA, um, would have the ability to levy an additional five mils. On the Addison Farms property holders. So everybody that was in there could get an additional five mils of property tax. On their own house to fund their own community. Um, no sweat, as far as I'm concerned. The NCA does issue bonds, they're backed by Addison Farms TIF. Um, Addison Farms guarantees payment on the bonds. And they do what they want to do with the millage. Um, it goes up or down. And they'd also like to discuss the potential for either pre-purchase of sanitary sewer tap fees. Water capacity charges, get some type of bulk discount. All items open for discussion. Um, none of them are written in stone. Your homework, should you choose to do so. Is to read this document so that you can ask, um, intelligent questions. Of council for developers.
I will just ask AI to summarize this in normal English for me, what it says about the TIF, and I will send it around.
Most appreciative, my dear, because you've got.
You will, I, I obviously have to sit down with Wendy and the mayor and go through this. Uh, one Wednesday, when court's in session. And, uh, try and put it into English for you all. But this is the first draft of the developer agreement. Um, we've had developer agreements before. Um, none that I, I think I have directly overseen, some of which hurt the village, some of which have helped the village. Um, you don't get a second chance at this, to quote famous man or something, whatever, what the hell did you say?
I said a wise man.
Wise man. So, read through it. We can, uh, sit down and talk about it. You guys can ask questions of the developer when they show up. Remember that the plan is still on the table. The only way it comes off the table is to take it off the table. They're not gonna take it off the table until they know that they've got some type of agreement. For, uh, the TIF and the NCA. Your pre-development agreement with them, pre, P R E, um, was that you would negotiate. Negotiate a TIF with them. Um, Alan has been steadfast. And I have been steadfast with them that the only TIF dollars we would want to use would be for outside of development, not inside of development. Understanding that, um, that they came up with the NCA concept. So that they could get additional millage to help pay for the inside. Um, if you will, the one thing that I did do when I staged this, if you look at the estimated off-site. Which is exhibit C, estimated onsite improvements, exhibit B, you're talking about. Twenty million in onsite and, and probably three million in off-site improvements.
So is that meaning that they think they can do all that road? Why do you give all that stuff for three million?
That's road erosion, earthwork, site work, storm, sewer, sanitary, water lines.
It's seven hundred thousand for Melchaz. It's seven hundred thousand for Melchazade.
Landscaping, surveying. That's a different, different build out. But. Read through it. Um, do not talk amongst yourselves outside of council. If you've got a direct question for me, don't CC all of your council members. You wanna call me, I'm listed. But this is the starting point for your discussions at the next regularly scheduled.
So can you just reclar, this is gonna sound dumb, but just to make sure I've got it, recapping. They, the onsite improvements are the ones that you guys have been steadfast. Did not go into the TIF.
Not go into the TIF.
And the outside, the off-site improvements would be what would go with the TIF.
Correct, typically, yes.
And they want to use the NCA to cover the onsite improvement breakdown.
Portion of it and the TIF to back the bonds. It's multi-layered financing. It is not for the faint of heart, and it is not easy to understand. But we'll look at that.
So this agreement still does not. A draft. If we would come to an agreement at some point, it still does not tie any member of council to voting in certain direction, correct?
I'm not sure I understand that.
So it's still tabled. They're wanting us to say that we're going to agree to this. When it comes off the table.
What is tabled? Is the rezoning application, which is up for its third reading.
Right.
Okay. They don't wanna take it off the table if they don't have a development agreement ironed out. We wanna do this in an open meeting so that the public is there, so that they see it, hear it, taste it, feel it, understand it. The taxes that they're gonna levy on their own residents, that's for them and their residents. What I think we have to be concerned with is, should this come off the table? Are we agreeing to the zoning? Are we agreeing to the TIF? Are we agreeing to the creation of the NCA? And what questions do you have that come from that? Once you read this document once or twice, you'll understand the concept, and then we can talk about the specifics.
Yeah. So, okay, let me think of how I can ask this. I'm obviously not saying it how I mean it. So a development agreement still doesn't say if I'm gonna vote yes or no to approve the zoning, correct? That's it. It seems like they're trying to tie us like they stated in the the one meeting. That they're owed things out of the pre-annexation agreement.
Yeah, they they don't want to go forward with the development. This is me speaking.
Yeah.
My idea. They don't wanna go forward with the development and the rezoning. If there's not gonna be some understanding that they're going to be able to have a TIF.
Yeah.
And an NCA or a TIF alone or an NCA alone. They need some type of financial. Security, some type of financial, um, backing in order to go forward with the plan as modified.
So out of ignorance, is this because they can't afford to do it without that? There's not enough in the budget? I honestly, I don't, I'm confused.
The model doesn't.
Taking out those houses of the town.
Yeah, the model doesn't bring them to where they need to be without getting some TIF financing for the outside stuff. And the NCA for the inside stuff. But that's a question for them. That's you. You're asking me my impression, but you need to ask me.
I was asking so that when I go through this, I can have that in the back of my mind.
Yeah, what what has been told to me.
Okay.
Is due to us taking out the townhomes and downsizing this and making the lots bigger and making the road bigger, the fire chief wanted it. Doing all the things that council asked me to do, I'm not gonna get as big of a return. So I need TIF financing to help on the outside and the NCA to help on the inside. And I need to be able to play with the bonds and I should say, I need to be able to pledge the bonds, um, back and forth to make sure that I can pay for each of those. So this is an ask of council. Hey, if we come down here and we develop four hundred houses for you. And we bring you enough people to put the new water plan online and and feed it. Are you going to help us with TIF financing and the creation of the NCA? That's the ask.
Okay. Yeah, I, okay. They're not developers, right? I mean, they they're not gonna build, they're not gonna anything.
Developers are not builders.
They're developers. Um, could they be the builders? I don't know. Could they hire?
No, they've said that they don't know who the builder is. And that's, I guess that's my confusion, is they're asking for things.
They're asking for this to go to successors and assign, so.
Yeah, and is that gonna be a headache or a a burden on the village for reassignments and and all that or?
No, I mean, the successor comes in, he's subject to the same development agreement.
It makes, I, correct me if I'm wrong, if council, okay, would would say, okay, yeah, fine, we're gonna do this. And they go with this, and then you rezone the property, that makes that property a whole lot more valuable when they turn around and sell it to a developed, to a builder.
Oh, okay.
So they'll they'll do the lots of planning. They'll they'll do all of this, have the roadways in, and then sell that to all the individual lots and groups.
I don't even know if they would have the roadways in.
Yeah.
They may be walking with the plat, completed plat and assigned an agreement and say, there you are.
That's a question that needs to be.
To find out, yes.
Wait, what, your ultimate, you're gonna vote on with this is resolution eighty-five, twenty twenty-five authorizing Allen to enter into disagreement?
But then it could still be turned down at the zoning vote, correct?
The zoning vote will be independent of this unless they seek to combine it to before the other one's taken off the table. And this could require.
I mean, that's, I guess that's what I wanna make sure that I'm still able to vote based on the constituents wants. At that time and not have that taken away by some agreement that they kinda hinted to in that meeting with the pre-annexation. I that I guess that's what I was asking.
If if you're if you're gonna back this agreement, then why wouldn't you go ahead and back the whole, the rezoning? If you're gonna, if you're gonna go along with this, if if you want this, if this is what you agreed to. Then really, you should be voting for the rezoning or else why would you not re, why would you not vote for the rezoning if you're in favor of this?
Oh, I I agree, but that's happened here in the past.
Well, and that's where.
I just wanna make sure that we don't get in that.
It shouldn't be happening. If you're in favor of this, you should be in favor of the rezoning. I mean, it would stand to reason. I mean.
The rezoning. You'll figure, correct me if I'm wrong, the rezoning, what they submitted the second or third time did not require any variance. They went with the road width that we wanted. They went with the number of units per acre that is required by the code. And there's no, no variance required by what they resubmitted. And all they're saying is. Can we count on this so that we can build this? And if if this is not a good deal, you wanna edit this, you don't want this deal? I don't think that they would take it off the table. I think they want want the property to be rezoned at this time, they'd probably put up a settlement.
Well, that becomes a council option. The council has the authority to take this off the table at any time we want to, correct?
He tabled it.
No, council voted to table it.
Right.
He at at his request.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I thought that.
And because we we have to, we had to vote on this within a certain length of time. We were restricted.
Right.
And we basically told him, well, this probably won't pass the way it is. We don't know. And he that night asked council to table it, so council tabled it. Council can literally take this off the table at any time they want and vote on it, call for a vote. But that doesn't do him any, I mean, it's, there's no reason to do that at this point in time.
Right. He's not, he's not requesting it come off the table.
Yeah.
Okay, I was under the impression that they had to.
He requested if he placed on the table, he can request it to come off the table.
Or at some point, council could ask for it to come off the table. If, I mean.
Council could, but you basically fulfill the request of of.
Okay.
The sponsors.
Fair enough. Yeah, yep, I get it. I mean.
Hey, is there any additional business?
Yeah, can, uh, we discussed the the social media and the emails I got about the. The hill and curve coming into town and another crash that happened there. I guess it was in the yard of the trailer there at Cyrus and.
They hit the sign there and then I don't know if this tried to double correct and they hit the the steps of, um, what was it?
Oh, so I know we discussed this in a meeting and in the last meeting, and it's come down to ODOT has to be the one to make the changes. And they've asked for possibly a guard rail on the on the village area.
Residents have requested a guard rail. We have discussed that. One resident, Jack Legg, took upon himself to call ODOT again today.
Okay.
And ODOT sent us an email this afternoon, plus they called Jack back as well. Um, they basically said, if you want a guard rail, it's that's village in all that's inside the village, the village puts it up.
Oh.
They're washing their hands of it.
Oh.
But if we put a guard rail up, which is probably more than needed. If a guard rail goes up, it would have to be to ODOT specs.
Yeah.
Which would.
That way anyway.
I would think so. But yeah, so we could put a guard rail up, but it would have to be to ODOT specs according to what their email said to us today.
Okay.
The, um, the other thing, just to let council know, there is our big. Sign that we have, our road sign is sitting out. Did you see that sitting down there just as you come into Commercial Point from seven sixty-two? That went up today and that says, uh, I supposed to say something about speed limit strictly enforced or whatever?
It did. So when I came in and I saw it, when I think of something being strictly enforced, I would have expected to see a police officer or something. How do we know that it's strictly enforced? Is it just?
Because there was at least four tickets already written today.
Really? So I just happened to miss them?
Fair enough.
Missed a speeder.
No, I did not. So, um, look, who's had, not me having speeding, I've not had a speeding ticket, thank you. So anyway.
When when I came down through there leaving the office today, between there and my house, a truck was coming the other way flashing his lights, letting me know. There's cops out all over the place. Yes, there has been, there has been four speeding tickets already written today, I believe.
Good.
They they have been instructed, they're writing them for about anything, four miles and over. Four, four, four miles an hour is over ten percent. You're you're ten percent over the speed limit.
Yeah.
And we've had, we've had two people killed there.
Yeah.
We've had three houses hit.
Jack Legg's house knocked off the foundation.
Yeah.
Jack, Jack Legg's house was hit, this house this past weekend. We've had another house hit.
Worse.
Mark Anderson has sent me videos of people coming out of town. On the wrong side of the road with cars coming up doing this, trying to get around everybody.
Two of them have been in Terry's, Straw Hayfield.
And the, um, the guys that hit the, um, this guy this weekend, if you're not familiar, he hit, when you come up over the hill, he hit the Cyrus. Uh, stop sign and how he cut that sign and didn't take out the street sign.
Yeah, I know.
And he caught the guy wire on the pole. Then he went across the street in front of oncoming traffic. He managed to get over, and he just didn't go across the street and hit the next house. He went down like two more houses down before he finally hit their step. And he's sitting there at the, up against their step in their house, their front porch step, and he's literally right there.
I really hope that's like a hundred reckless ops all in one, because that's ridiculous.
Well, it it is. It's 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 been a mess.
Needs to be like ten.
And what what we have asked ODOT was to reduce the speed limit to thirty-five at the top of the hill where it's fifty. That would help the fire department pulling out. That would slow it down. There'd be plenty slow enough getting up the hill. The problem we've got, ODOT has refused to do that in the past.
Yep.
So you have fif, they slow it down at the top of the hill, just east of Foxfire entrance, old Foxfire entrance. They slow it from fifty-five to fifty. And it's fifty mile an hour down the hill, up the hill.
Yeah.
And when you come right into town on that blind curve, it drops to thirty-five. That's the problem. ODOT hasn't worked with us on this. And obviously, the email today, ODOT said, you wanna guard rail, put it up.
Can you put your own speed sign up?
No, they will not let us.
Legally binding.
They will not. And the other problem we have is ODOT has it fifty mile an hour on that side of the road in front of the car wash.
Yeah.
And it's fifty-five mile an hour going east in front of the car wash. So we have a highway with two separate speeds on it. Nope, it's fifty-five when you leave town, but they've lowered it to fifty coming into town.
I thought it was the fifty-five.
So you're gonna.
Are we doing the guard rail thing?
Yeah, the guard rail.
I will talk to Susan, John Gross, and see if we can get some prices and let everyone know what we're looking at, because I'm sure this is not gonna be cheap.
That's state highway money though, right?
Well, I don't.
It should be.
It would, it would be. I don't know how much, if we've got enough to cover, whatever this is liable to be. I don't know what it costs to put a guard rail up. Um, like I said, I'm sure it's not gonna be cheap.
Have ODOT bill it. But so it is something we're gonna move forward with.
We will be moving forward with that, but in the meantime, this this this, uh, speed limit stuff.
Yeah, hopefully it helps.
Is, it's a Band-Aid.
Yeah.
But we've had an officer, to answer Audrey, we've had an officer at the bottom of the hill and at the top of the hill.
Good.
And like I said, we've, I know of, well, there were three when I left this afternoon at four thirty, and when I left. They pulled out, was red lighting after another person as I was falling in my driveway. So I I'm taking that as a good.
They must have been on potty break when I came through. That's perfect.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Favor.